So hello again, I'm Chaz Fleming. Thank you for coming to this presentation for my first meet and greet as your Manhattan Beach City Council candidate. I know you guys are familiar who I am as a resident because I've only been here since November of 2019, but I am someone who is highly indefatigable about making a change here in Manhattan Beach and being a part of that process in and out of council, but hopefully we're going to get me into council. So I'm here to give you a history about who I am, what I'm here to bring to Manhattan Beach and the issues that are close to me here and things that are here in the climate that we're in today. So I just want to be, you know, a representative of that. So hello again, like I said, I'm Chaz Fleming. Just some history about who I am. I was born in Washington DC. I moved here in 2000. My mother is actually here. Her name is Monica. Mom, can you wave real quick? I can see her, but that's my mother there and she is a single mother who raised me to be the man I am today and I am in representation of her and by God thankful of who I am by the gifts that were made by me being, you know, a chef. My mother had cancer. I became a chef at age 21, my first career and, you know, going to culinary school to go cook for my mother who was going to stage for a heartilloma. So I'm someone who does for people, starting from my family, that hey, being a chef, who wouldn't know by God created a great life for me to go on to be a chef for the Real House of Beverly Hills, Liza Minnelli, good, you know, high, you know, velocity events when it came to working for Jimmy Kimmel, Lives Green Room, just having a great momentum in my first part of my career of just being hospitable and being hardworking in that capacity as well. I did move into going into a different, you know, field. I was like, hey, why not go into a school district? Because I always wanted to have a small business as a young chef. I mean, young chefs usually want to have a, you know, restaurant. I actually wanted to have a sauce line. So I wanted to have a sauce line and call Chaz it up and I used to make a sauce called vanilla barbecue sauce, which was something that was, you know, uncanny for the time, really good sauce, but to the point that, you know, it's hard to have business here in California and just the time wasn't made for it. But with the time took me to going to Burbank Unified School District where I came a substitute there and I also in that time worked as a substitute office manager in that time as substitute office manager went to being at a office, an elementary school assistant. So in that capacity, I was in elementary and education for two years, understanding the troubles that children have even for myself being someone who was in social education to seeing how kids are represented to, you know, from the curriculum specialists all the way down to individual specialists. So so many things that were involved to my life that I can see as an adult that were beneficial to where I'm at today. And leaving Burbank Unified School District, I had the opportunity of going back into culinary and going back into culinary, I had a chance to work for a catering company that got me into the capacity of being a retail catering supervisor. I got that job in six months from being a contract employee. So that shows you how hardworking I am, especially in a healthcare facility where we had a census of 143 in Panama City, which is in the San Fernando Valley. And in that capacity, I managed staff, I led staff, I budgeted parties, I created parties, I managed a cafeteria, I created the food license, our retail license that was brought into the hospital to create a new type of business that we were doing. I created a kosher station to help our Jewish doctors be able to feel the freedomness to eat in our cafeteria. So it was something that I was, you know, very highly indefatigable working in and I got a call, then I was there, by the way, I was there for two years. So I left that capacity in March. In February, I got an awakening and I would I call this awakening by something of God and I'm not going to preach faith to anyone today, but I will say from my faith of who I believe in, God called me to do a higher service for others because at the capacity at Michigan Community Hospital, we were dealing with homelessness. We were dealing with a demographic of seniors and people in transitional housing and people who were just looking to get into the hospital just to get a meal at the end of the night. So things like that understanding and being the capacity I am as a supervisor, leading the staff and trying to understand that we are here to provide a service in, you know, what we do here in healthcare. So it's compassion. So that was something I was very proud of and, you know, also having to leave to do something that was greater for something, someone else. Because that's all I, you know, I feel that in life, you're here to do good and if you choose good and bad, I choose to do good. I choose to do good for all around. So I left that job to go and, you know, see what I can do and write for public office. I moved to Manhattan Beach in November of 2019 and moving to Manhattan Beach in 2019, I, you know, being out of a new district as far as when it comes to, this is not getting into like the election process, when it comes to getting in a new district, new residents, when you're trying to run for some type of public office and you're feeling that fuel, at the time, there was only the gubernatorial office for me to go towards. So that's how I became, hey, I'm going to run for governor of California. And that's where we came, let me get this campaign started in March to lead me into where I'm at today and let's talk about where I was at when I came into July. And this is where a situation where I'm now here as your Manhattan Beach City Council representative and candidate. So when it comes to that capacity, in July 9th, there was a police forum that was held by the city council and I happened to be, you know, coming back from DC at the time and hey, I was like, what's going on back home? I haven't been home in a while when I hear what's happening and understanding what was going on when it came to the situation here in Manhattan Beach and knowing that wow, myself being oblivious to certain issues that are happening here in Manhattan Beach because I'm looking at the state level, I'm looking at all these other places to focus my time, but I'm here at a place that thankful for me to be able to afford Manhattan Beach. I have a great roommate who was saying, hey, I got a great job down here, I'm a new engineer. Do you want to move down to Manhattan Beach? I said, why not? Yes, year of yes, faith in that yes, not knowing that would bring me to this promise of even running for public office, even being here to be a Manhattan Beach City Council candidate. So when it came to understanding what's happening here and knowing that there is so much to be done, I would be a nanny or yet a narcissist to think I could be governor of California when I can actually be an advocate here in Manhattan Beach as a citizen in the time that is needed. So I just want to give you a bit of, you know, overview of who I am and I, you know, even in my time at Michigan Community Hospital and as a gubernatorial candidate, actually just a person trying to do good, you know, I'm not running for governor anymore, I'm actually committed to being a representative of Manhattan Beach for the lifelong term, I will be here because, you know, we need to be focused on today. And I just want to show you two certificate recognitions I received by the state of California for just my leadership and my direction and charitable efforts. So I received two certificate recognitions. I don't know if you guys can see them, I'll bring them close to the camera, but these certificate recognitions were for my leadership, for providing an event for the annual holiday open house they had at the 46th district, which is in Van Nuys, where they for the first time invited residents in that district of multicultural to come in to understand how the government works, what the government services can give you and especially around coronavirus, those services have been obtained by the residents of 46. So even when it came to my time, and that's by the way, this is from December 11th, 2019, I received another one in June 15th of 2020 and this was for my charitable efforts. So when I left my job as a retail catering supervisor to go into public service, I told my hospital staff, colleagues and friends, I'll be back to give to you guys in a way that, you know, will show you the hard work I'm doing. So here we are, I'm leaving March 5th, coronavirus happens around this time where we're having a lockdown and this hospital that I was working at was piqued with over 38 cases of coronavirus in the month, the first month. So just knowing the sacrifices that the frontline workers are going through and the standards that my, you know, employees, colleagues were already dealing with before, knowing the struggles that they were having, I was like, what can I do to come back? So what I did, I called up a friend, I have a friend who has a hair brand, hair brand product and I called him, I said, hey, would you be able to donate product for this hospital? I wanted to give back to them. He asked me, what do you need? And then gave me $150,000 worth of product to give to this hospital. So I was able to give 600 gift bags to healthcare workers, I'm talking security, nurses, housekeeping, doctors, anyone who passed by was able to receive a gift bag for their work in the capacity in the coronavirus because that's what it takes. It takes someone who actually care and I actually lost a friend during that time at the hospital from coronavirus and was able to get her recognized for her 20 years in Van Nuys as a nurse by the state and a memory from the LA county, sorry, LA county. So it was something that my work and for my people who I represent and not just seeing this lady, by the way, just saying hi to her every day I work, this, you know, this is how I consider her friend. So going the extra effort to do something for others is what I'm here to continually do. So when people say, you know, you know, you haven't been here that long, why should we give you a chance? That's exactly why I should give you that chance because I'm here for you. I'm here to understand what's going on here. I'm here to learn, I'm here to be a better representation of what is being out there for people who are being underrepresented. So that's a little brief history of who I am and there will be more forums and weekly meet and greets, so you'll get to know who I am as the weeks go along, but that's just a little bit of brief history of who I am and how I got to this point and becoming a public servant and wanted to serve you in a higher status. So thank you for that moment. I'm going to move on to the second part of the, you know, campaign, what's been going on in the campaign. So, you know, we started this campaign two months ago and I just wanted to say that, you know, we are at $1,955 in campaign donations and that's great. I'm talking about, this is one month of donations and we're at $532 in the bank. So believe me, every cent count and all that money has gone to great resources. We have gotten to the easy reader. I don't know if you guys have seen the easy reader that would have been out this month that hasn't come to mail yet, but you can get it at the Manhattan Beach Chamber of Commerce and other entities that provide it, but if you look on page 13, we're right there on page 13, right next to Heather who's ready for city councils, I mean, sorry, Manhattan Beach School Board, but we are right here. There's two other candidates in the easy reader and also when it comes to that, we're doing door-to-door canvassing in a way that I am, I don't know if anyone is here who has seen these little door hangers on your door, but I've been going around and putting these door hangers on people's doors and also with my intern, Emma, who is an amazing resident here in Manhattan Beach as well, in helping me get the word out. We're going to move forward in doing direct-to-door mailing, but this is where the supplies go to us creating these marketing to be able to get your attention. So also we have window signs here, window signs that you can also get from a campaign, please email me, please let me know if you want one, I will definitely happy to provide and deliver. And also we do have yard signs and we have been sending letters, the donor letters, we've been sending letters to residents, we've been trying to get our, I swear to you, my name out because this thing, and I say R, it's crazy, I'm saying R, it's only me and Emma. I'm myself and Emma, my intern, when it comes to the capacity of the human infrastructure I have amongst you guys, speaking out my name and giving out my card, I appreciate you telling your friends and to see the amount of people here today, I'm so thankful. So we're doing something great, we're on the right track. There was a newsletter that went out last week and, you know, it kind of discounted me, it didn't even include me as a candidate in there. I'm like, wow, you know, I'm working hard as any other candidate who was going out making meeting signs at Bruce's Beach, going to, you know, have to be, you know, I was the candidate that was, you know, read the patch, I was the one that had to go out and read get signatures because the nine people, the 16 out of 20, it takes 20 signatures to get nominated, the 25 were from nine that were, you know, moved from address, unregistered in the district, things like that, which I had to reach back into the residents to get them to be aware of that status so they can vote for this Manhattan Beach City Council election. This is very important, we're talking about, by the way, the Manhattan Beach City Council election is the first time I'm hearing that it's on the general ballot. So we're talking about a big change that can happen from the votes coming in, especially in the fact of a presidential ballot being next to it. So I want to go now into the campaign issues. So we're going to go into the campaign issues and we're going to start line by line. And by the way, there will be two videos I will be presenting on certain issues. They aren't, you know, graphic or anything, they're just, you know, just information, historical information and they're going to be about 15 minutes long, so please be prepared for that. But I want to talk about affordable equal housing. I get this question a lot when it comes to, how are we going to include affordable equal housing? What is equal housing? What is, you know, how are we going to include affordable housing in Manhattan Beach? Well, currently we are in the need of 38 units by 2021 and this is from a housing element created in 2013, adopted in 2014. And there is a big number, there is 791 units needed by 2029, but let's just focus on the 38 because this is where we are looking at the big numbers, but where can we fulfill this opportunity? And hey, there are opportunities, we can buy out hotels. You know, the city has conducted eminent domain, which I want to get into when it comes to another situation that's going on in conversations, but the city has conducted eminent domain twice in the last couple of years on making, you know, certain provisions so they can get more land. And, you know, this is the reason why we are understanding, like, we don't have enough land here in Manhattan Beach, where are we going to put these houses? We had a planning commission on this for seven years and it has had nothing done. When I talked to the community development director here in Manhattan Beach and asked, where are we at when it comes to this status? Because we're at, like I said, the need of 38 units by 2021 and on our current public works plan from 2020, 2021, we have nothing on the table regarding this issue. And that's scary. That's scary that we have money coming into situations from SB 2 to the bill 2, which builds for affordable housing and builds jobs, which can lead for us to be able to create and plan for this with the expenditures being there. So there's much more work I'm going to get into when it comes to the issues of public services and refine our public services and maintain them for us to, you know, be able to see the processes happen. So this is something that I really want to go further and now have a community meeting as far as in the weekly meetings to go further about affordable housing. But I always say our issues are the reasons why we must succeed. If we can't make this happen, we must succeed. And that's saying it's important to talk about the issues because low affordable housing, equal housing, it's a situation that involves our benefit to our seniors, first-time buyers, low-income families. That's what it's about. That's what the equal chance is, the equal chance for those people as well as yourself in the time of whatever happens in your life, to be able to seize the moment of being able to live in Manhattan Beach because that has not been off and that's a problem. So and this shouldn't not be a political issue, I just want to say that, this should not be a political issue, this is just, you know, something that has to be done. So when it comes to now, small business and micro business support, we are fueled in Manhattan Beach by amazing small and micro businesses and I want to emphasize on micro businesses because we do have a majority of micro businesses here in Manhattan Beach. We are not a small business community, we are a micro business and even to the point where people were trying to get the PPP loans, they weren't able to get it based on certain classifications and not having the representation by banking to, you know, to go after those loans to, you know, sustain their business. So that was a little disheartening for me, you know, during COVID in this time and, you know, we're talking about restaurants, clothing stores, grocers, various personal services and independent contractors. Independent contractors are a new demographic in our business here in Manhattan Beach. So understanding that, understanding that independent contractor now, if they want to keep their independent contractor status, they still have to now go out and pay a franchise tax fee. So they're paying a business tax fee and getting a state license and they can get a city license. So we have to look at that new change in our demographic and business and I support keeping the small micro business sector strong and I won't let big developers come into Manhattan Beach to take away from our small town business glory because we need to focus on the fact that there are people that want to have a live work play here in Manhattan Beach. There are people that want to take away from that small town personality. I mean, I saw it happen in Burbank when they built the Walmart, I'm sorry, four years ago. So just the revenue that took away from small businesses that were there for 50-plus years was very sad. So I will be at a Chamber of Commerce event on September 30th at 8:00 PM. So we'll be talking about various business needs and we'll be talking about city issues. So please look forward to joining that and I will be having that in my website under the news section. So please look forward to that. And this is where we're going to get into a conversation now on, now this is a sensitive topic for now in Manhattan Beach, we're talking about right here, the Bruce's Beach situation. We're going to talk about the Uematsu family and I don't know if people are familiar with the Uematsu family, but I'm going to bring hopefully some history into who the Uematsu family is. So in these next two slides here, you're going to see a photo of Miyosaku Uematsu, this is from Star Nursery and this photo is from Descanso Gardens and we have Charles and Willard Bruce. So we all know what Charles and Willard Bruce is from the Bruce's Beach situation, but let's talk about the Uematsu family. The Uematsu family is actually the family that the Miracosta High School administration, that people are asking the Miracosta High School administration to inform that Miracosta High School is built on land that was taken from Japanese-American families during an internment. So this is something that I want to bring some history on and I have two videos to accompany this as they can represent it much better with their research and knowledge and I will be speaking on my opinion after. And this video is about the camellias in the Japanese internment. So just the people who just don't understand and I'll be into the history when it comes to Miracosta High School.
After the construction of the house was complete, Bodhi begins to landscape the property and he was interested particularly in plants whose origin was Asia. And in doing that, he met the growers in the San Gabriel Valley of Japanese descent who were running large-scale commercial nursery operations to provide landscape planning for the rising development that was happening in Los Angeles at that time.
The early 20th century labor force for residential gardening was really invented by Japanese immigrant and Japanese-American men who came to developing metropolitan Los Angeles. They discovered that they could make a living by tending other people's gardens.
Bodhi buys tens of thousands of camellia plants in 1942. That takes him into the cut flower business because at that time in the 40s and early 50s, the camellia was a very high demand, very exotic, very fashionable flower and particularly desirable in the Midwest and the East Coast because it blooms in the winter. The origin story of the camellias at Descanso was for many years not discussed.
On December 7th, 1941, Japan bombed Pearl Harbor. Immediately afterwards, because of pre-existing racism and just the hysteria, on February 19th, 1942, President Roosevelt issued an executive order, 9066, which enabled the mass incarceration of Japanese-Americans from the West Coast without any trial or hearing. Just if you were of Japanese ancestry, someone like me had to be removed from our homes and go into the interior 10 camps throughout the United States that held 100,000 Japanese-Americans. After that executive order, these American citizens and American residents had to leave all their belongings behind. They had to sell their property at cut rate prices. In Southern California, 1,000 acres of flowers were farmed by Japanese-Americans and that was kind of half of the flowers in the whole region.
Bodhi, along with his superintendent, Howard Asper, saw business opportunity in this moment, but they also had this deep compassion for the Japanese-Americans who had become their friends through the camellia trade. Bodhi bought the entire inventories from two Japanese-American families, the Uematsu family of Star Nursery and the Yoshimura family of the San Gabriel Nursery. They were camellia growers. He paid a fair price for the plants and triggered the idea that he could actually use his Rancho del Descanso as a business enterprise in the camellia trade. Bodhi also took over and helped run during the period of internment, a nursery that was owned by the Yoshimura family and that business continues to this day.
This is the ledger of the landscaping accounts that the nursery did. It ends on April 8th, 1942. As you can see, all the rest of the pages are blank. This is when they were sent away. The camellias that are at Descanso Garden, many came from my family's nursery and they're still thriving and have outlived my grandparents. It's a very nice connection to have.
It never made any sense to me that the origin of the camellias needed to be somehow hidden or apologized for or muffled. The Japanese-American community was immensely influential in the San Gabriel Valley and other parts of Los Angeles.
The reintegration of the Japanese from an alien race that had to be locked up to pillars of the community in a sense, it was an enormous step forward. By the 1960s, those people had come back, their reintegration into the fabric of this community, part of it symbolically was in the building of Japanese gardens here at Descanso. They built these beautiful things as a celebration in essence of their culture, but also that they were being reintegrated into American culture after the trauma of internment. interment.
Okay. So I showed that video, sorry, pardon me. I showed that video to go over the history that is around the Japanese interment. And I'm going to talk about the Uematsu family after we have this look of Bruce's Beach situation. So I think give your time in watching these videos and let's proceed to the next one.
When I told folks that my family once owned the beach here, they would laugh at me. They didn't believe African Americans owned beaches.
So we're in Manhattan Beach, California, at Bruce's Beach Park. But who's Bruce? And what's the history behind that name? In 1912, Charles and Willa Bruce bought a beautiful piece of land between 26th and 27th Street in Manhattan Beach, California. On that land, they built a resort overlooking the magnificent Pacific Ocean. While Charles Bruce worked as a dining cart chef on the train running between LA and Salt Lake City, Willa ran the popular resort. The area attracted black beachgoers and other blacks who moved in and built their own cottages by the sea. And it was affectionately referred to as Bruce's Beach.
Bruce's Beach was one of the few beaches in Southern California where African American families could legally attend. As Bruce's Beach became more popular, racial hostility towards the African American community grew.
What followed black beachgoers, however, was a flood of harassment by white residents in Manhattan Beach. When the harassment by local residents failed, the city stepped in with a solution to drive blacks out of the area. In 1924, more than two dozen properties, including the resort, were seized through eminent domain because the city said there was a need for a public park in the area. The Bruce's and other black families sued alleging what led to the seizing of their properties was racial prejudice. The Bruce's sought $120,000 in compensation. The litigation took years and resulted in a payout of only $14,500. After their land was taken from them, the Bruce's went inland and spent the remainder of their lives as chefs for other businesses. The land remained a vacant lot for years, and it wasn't until the 1950s that a park was built out of fear that the families might come back and sue for their land back. Are you a resident around this area?
I'm in the South Bay.
So when did you become aware of the history of Bruce's Park?
Actually, I had heard about it a while ago, but I forgot about it. And my daughter, Amaya, wanted us to come just to be out by the beach like a week ago. And so we decided to come here and we were thinking, what is it? Me and my husband, because my husband was with us too. And we was like, what is it about this, the name of this park that we were trying to figure out? And it was so crazy because the next day, on my Facebook feed, a friend of mine posted a link to the, I think, LA Times article about this particular area and the history of it. And I clicked on it and I was like, we were just there! And so I shared it with my daughter and my husband. And we were like, yeah. And so my husband was like, yeah, I remember hearing about that a while back. And so we just kind of read the article and refreshed our memory. And then my daughter was like, uh-uh, our ancestors found it there. We need to be at that park every week.
So what does this area symbolize to you? This park?
Well, that there's history that is little known. And so, you know, it would be nice to make sure that everybody's aware of it, not just, you know, through a Facebook feed.
When we think about discrimination, or especially 100 years ago, we think maybe California was free of that because it's not part of the South.
No, because I actually am a direct descendant of someone who was directly discriminated against. My mom, when she came here in 1969, she faced a lot of discrimination because of her accent and because of the fact that she was an outsider. I know that it happened here because this is where she came from, Belize, straight here.
What this park symbolizes to me is how the system was used to demolish, to rob black people of their wealth. Whatever little amount of wealth they managed to build over the years, system and laws being used against them to rob them of that wealth. That only makes me wonder how many more Bruce's Beaches are out there. They might not necessarily be by the beach in a rich area. Might not be resorts. Might not be hotels or a business. But it's the fact that the government used a law to hold back a group of people. The argument I hear right now about systemic racism and how it doesn't exist now because there are no specific racist laws in the book. In a lot of cases, it's not that there were specific laws for black people and specific laws for white people. Some existed in the books, right? But a lot of the times, it was not that. What happened is how those laws are get applied. All of a sudden, this community needs a park. When it's a black couple that has built a resort on that land, that land has to be taken away from them. They will tell you, it's not a racist law. It's eminent domain, something the community needs, something we would have done for anybody who would have owned that piece of land. But somehow it happens to black people. And they will tell you, I would have pulled you over. The fake $20 bill is something that applies to everybody. Right? But how is that law applied when it comes to white people and black people? That's what we are saying is systemic racism. This park, yeah, it happened 100 years ago, but it's still relevant today. Just think about how much wealth was taken away from the Bruce family. Because their kids, their grandkids could not inherit this resort, this land from them. That is worth millions and millions of dollars right now. That's what we're talking about when we talk about the racial wealth gap. We want to make sure this doesn't still happen now. Over the years, the park had many names, including City Park, Beachfront, and Bayview Terrace Park. It wasn't until 2006 that the city council voted to remain the park after the Bruce family. A plaque went up that reluctantly tells the story of Bruce's Beach by first giving recognition to a white man, Mr. George Peck, who was, quote, "one of our community's co-founders" who made it possible for the beach area below the site to be developed as Bruce's Beach. The plaque makes very little mention of the Bruce family.
When I told folks that my family once owned the beach here, they would laugh at me. They didn't believe African Americans owned beaches.
So over the years, this park has had various different names. And the last paragraph here, it tells you why it was named Bruce's Park at the end. And I'm just going to read what it says. "The Manhattan Beach City Council renamed the park as Bruce's Beach in July 2006, commemorating our community's understanding that friendship, goodwill, and respect for all begins within our own boundaries and extends to the world community. All are welcome." On the surface, that's such a nice sentiment. You know, to commemorate all love and accepting and understanding starts within our boundaries. But why not say, this is dedicated to the people that had a resort here, who were driven out of this community. These people were a beacon of hope for the black community in LA. All of that demolished. Now, there's a new movement to not only replace the plaque with a new one that accurately tells the story of the Bruce family, but to also give the land back to the family along with the restitution for 95 years of lost revenue.
Welcome back, everyone. So as we just saw, two examples in history in Manhattan Beach where POC, as I'm going to say, POC, people of color, people of culture, people of our community, businesses, livelihood, taken away by situations that were going on in American government, the times, wherever we want to look at the blame and the confusion, we need to most definitely be aware of the situation. So to go back into what the views we saw today, we saw a video talking about the Japanese interment. So that goes back into the Uematsu family. The Uematsu family was a Japanese American family who, in Manhattan Beach during 1940s, owned 120 acres of land. So 120 acres of land also leading to Redondo and our neighboring communities. One parcel sitting on the Miracosta lot. So Miracosta High School website states that the land was purchased from Japanese Americans, but doesn't go into the history. And the history is, you know, from the granddaughter of the Uematsu family. She states that when they were, when their family was held in Manizar, Star's properties were maintained by white employees, according to the granddaughter, Mary Co. The employees used Uematsu's business funds and forced him to sell his life insurance and other properties in Manhattan Beach. So during their time in Manizar, Kuni and Miyosaku Uematsu were forced to slowly sell all pieces of their land in order to maintain their nursery business while they were in interment camp. Why they hoped that their employees would take care of it, the good generous spirit these people had into thinking that. So situations that, asking, what can we do from this? I mean, we're talking about really, families of the Bruce's and the Uematsu's deserves their history and their sacrifices to be honored. And that's by recognition. Just recognizing those things in council is something of significance. Giving that history to our children who are going into Miracosta High School and left Miracosta High School is a significance. We need to be significant in the history that we have here because it is so strong. And there is some things that need to be rectified from the history that is held here. So even to come back to Bruce's Beach, you saw a great length video and we're talking about where we're at today when it comes to Bruce's Beach. When it comes to Bruce's Beach, the Manhattan Beach City Council has created a task force. The task force that by October 2nd, if you are not familiar with that task force, if you're a Manhattan Beach resident, you can actually apply for that task force and have a say in what needs to happen for the recognition of Bruce's Beach. You know, talking about not giving reparations. They're talking about renaming of the plaque and putting in additional cultural work, artwork. But there's things that we can do to go further. And that's up to conversation and I will be open to that. And any Q and A, if you guys have any, well, know any ideas about that. But I want to definitely be aware of the time as we are almost 10 minutes from four o'clock. So I kind of want to speed it up just a little. Sorry about my long videos. But this is where it comes to also, when it comes to the Bruce's family and Uematsu family. And getting back into what I was talking about, small and micro business support, these businesses should have been protected in Manhattan Beach by the representatives in the government, nonpartisan. And that's where I'll leave that until we get into conversation further. So I'm going to pull back into my presentation. And if, by the way, and if you are wanting to join the Manhattan Beach Task Force, I will have on my website, you can go to the city, city dot, citymb.info to join the task force. So I'm going to pull up my slides. And just to put it back there, I mean, when it comes to these families, it's about, and this is the thing, everyone deserves justice, no matter what the race, no matter what the place, everyone deserves justice. No one's listening for revenge here. We learn to seek justice from the Bible. So it's okay to be able to ask for what you can get as far as if you feel wrong. But no one's listening for anything. And I really want to make sure that's clear because I have spoken to the Bruce's family representative. And I just want to make sure that's being, you know, clear. Modernizing public services. Modernizing public services goes from code enforcement, traffic lights, paved streets. Let's talk about how many potholes we got on our streets. I mean, I am an avid scooter here in the South Bay and I love scooting around here. If you ever see me scooting, it's, I'm having fun. But it's not fun when you are getting in bumps, getting into a crash. And it didn't happen here. My friend got in a big crash on our scooter in Hermosa Beach due to their pothole situation. And that is bleeding here to Manhattan Beach. So in a situation where our kids are biking and we are, you know, trying to get exercise, we need to be able to have, you know, better streets. And that also goes back into our environment. We're talking about an environment strategy plan that was made two years ago that hasn't been brought, brought to any fruition. We're talking about the education that was supposed to happen in Brown House that never got happened, that never happened. So situations that are now planning for, and they put that in the exemption in that first strategy report, if they couldn't get to certain ideals and things like that, they will look into a further report. But it's a situation now of talking about taking the housing element from 2013, from 2021 to 2021 to 2028. And why are we putting more money, more time, and not getting anything done? Even when it comes to situations that we do have measures that went through, like Measure A, that is supposed to go to the police and emergency services. And also, under that lining, it has paved streets in graffiti. Where are the streets getting paved? When are we getting the services met? And where is the accountability for that money and expenditure being presented as it was voted in? And that's what it's coming to be about accountability in all our public services here in Manhattan Beach. We have a great fire department. We have a police service that is protecting and serving. And we want to understand even more, how are you protecting, protecting and serving? So things like that are questioned at this time, especially when people are home and seeing what's happening here on our streets. And we're talking about also doing things as far as homeless outreach. You know, I don't know if anyone knows this, but Manhattan Beach leads the initiative for the South Bay homeless. Does anyone know that? Does anyone know Manhattan Beach controls the funds around that? So we're talking about Manhattan Beach is partnering up with beach cities and health district and going further in helping in rehousing. I mean, housing takes six months to one year. So just the notes from that have been significant on the fact that, yes, homelessness has come down here in Manhattan Beach, but we still have so much more work to do. It's not as if it's getting done without having an understanding of the mental health issues, without having an understanding of how can we help someone who doesn't want help? Because there is a demographic around that as well. So just the fact that Manhattan Beach is leading that initiative, we need to be way more aware of how they are going further into that. And especially when we have situations that homelessness is coming into Manhattan Beach, what can we do to help if we can help? That's what we need to be looking for. What can we do to help? So I actually encourage you, and I will link that in my website. There was a MB homeless initiative, MB Safe. MB Safe means take alternatives for everyone. And they had a session on September 9th regarding what they're doing. And the gentleman named Gabe, sorry. And the gentleman named Gabe, sorry, George from that Manhattan City also came into the meeting and spoke about what the city is doing on that initiative. So I want you all to be aware of that and I will link that on my website. So please look for that for the end of the evening and this session most definitely. So a little bit nervous on homelessness, just so you guys know, we are in 2019, 2018, we're at 41 homeless in Manhattan Beach. We got down into 2019, 21. And at 2020, right now at 15. And we had a low numbers at 2016 at four. So from 2015 and 2016, four, 2017 to seven, to 41, 21 to 15. So we're doing the right thing when it comes to initiative and provide for homelessness. But what is going on around that? We want to, we want to know more information, right? So when it comes to even my capacity at my hospital before, and my hospital was an adult psychiatric hospital and part of census. So we have an understanding when it came to our meetings with hurdles. We have a directors as far as understand supervisors regarding what is happening with our demographic as far as the demographic we're serving here at the hospital. The demographic, like I said, we're coming in for just a meal for a night. We're coming in because they had nowhere to stay. They didn't know the sources for a shelter. They wanted to get on the 5150 so they could have somewhere to stay for three days. And then, you know, sometimes you get extended on that 5150 to get another study to our hole. So furthering their time into a system where are we helping? Where are we helping as far as understanding what we can do? And we have so much to understand around mental illness, even when it comes to the way our police are handling situations. So there's a lot that we need to talk about around mental illness. I actually did a podcast, which you can search on YouTube. It's called Thinking Real Podcast. And we did a, we did a segment about mental illness and for many cultures and also giving support and solutions to the National Alliance for Mental Illness, NAMI. So I actually went to a NAMI walk last year, you know, it's horrible. Can't have walk this year, but we still could walk and giving the messages out and support. So if you know anyone in need of support, please always give to them. Alrighty. Protecting youth and seniors. This is a situation where, let's talk about something that happened recently. I mean, I was, had a meeting, by the way, as a candidate with Chief Abel. So Chief Abel and I had a meeting a month ago and we were able to get a good, and this is kind of going back into public services and when it comes to protecting our youth. Because Chief Abel and I had a great conversation when it came to ideas and initiatives we can pull through as a community member and a candidate in moving forward and helping our team, the situations at Miracosta High School, where teenagers are getting into drugs, baby. There was a situation where a boy in Hermosa Beach, Scotty Hen Street, passed away last month from a lace Xanax pill. There's so many situations, even for fentanyl overdoses that happened here in Manhattan Beach that haven't been uncovered. So it's so much happening around drugs and children being at home around this time with coronavirus. And parents also maintaining their businesses and their homes and their lives as well to, I mean, we all get distracted. So we cannot distract ourselves from our youth and making sure we're creating great youth programs from the city to help the youth succeed. I know we had a leadership program here by the city, but the thing is, we can't just be focusing on the great, great kids. We gotta be focused on the kids that need the support. I was a kid that struggled in high school. I was a kid that struggled in middle school and elementary school. And the love that my teachers had for me, the principal of support, to liberate me, to even be here today to tell you, hey, you can make it when it comes to support. So we also have to support our youth and support our seniors. We need more senior programs. We need more senior living facilities. We don't have any 55 and older facilities enough for the influx of seniors we have that are going to be retiring and want to, wanting to be selling their home and downsizing. So there is not that chance here in Manhattan Beach. It's actually, someone told me, you can't die here in Manhattan Beach. I was like, what do you mean you can't die here in Manhattan Beach? They said, okay, there is a hospital, there is no cemetery. And, you know, you can't hardly retire to break down and, you know, live. So I was like, wow, I didn't think about that. And of course you don't think about that unless you're, you know, in a situation like, wow, yeah, where does it serve this way? I need it. Why it hasn't been done? And it was on the table and no one was aware of it. So we have to be more aware and having a transparent government and more stronger representative all in the government. So going to protecting cyclists. Let's protect youth as well when it comes to cyclists. I was scootering down the street a couple of days ago and these two kids were on their scooter too and just stopping at stoplight, the stop sign here on Meadows and said right past Meadows and 11th. And I almost, sorry, I spent, Meadows and 11th, I almost crashed into them. It was crazy, but look, I'm on a scooter, I can stop myself. Imagine it was a car. So when it comes to even children being aware of the vehicle code here in California, motor vehicle drivers also have to be aware of the vehicle code here and protecting cyclists. We need more bike lanes. We need more awareness when it comes to bikes can use the full lane and riding here and commuting in Manhattan Beach. I've had a situation here two times where people have stopped me when I was using a full lane at the, on the right side, stopped me saying, is something wrong with you? Are you okay? I'm like, yes, why? Why are you in the middle of a crosswalk? I'm stating that I'm on my electric scooter and I can be on the, you know, full lane. This guy stopped me off like I was crazy. Like it's crazy how people don't understand the code and we need to protect our cyclists. We need to create when we are repaving our streets that need them. We need to be able to have smoother streets and bike lanes designated for the people to commute safely here in Manhattan Beach. That is something that everyone should have to be able to feel safe in Manhattan Beach, no matter how you're getting around. So I want to go into why you should vote for me. I will let you know, I am consistent, persistent, optimistic that we can make a change here in Manhattan Beach. A great change in unity and coming together with a strong representative as myself being here to let you know, I am for Manhattan Beach. I am here to let you know that I will fight for you for the rights that you have to live in Manhattan Beach, as I do, as anyone should. That's the great glory of that. I was brought to Manhattan Beach luckily by a great chance to have a roommate to involve me in his life to get, hey, have me see a new chance and promise for myself. And that promise has led me here to let you know that I am for Manhattan Beach. I am for you. I've been doing my research for the last three months around Manhattan Beach and what's been going on. So I can give you the proper information, the right information on time. And the special interest I only have is you. The only people who are supporting me are you. And I thank you all for your donations. I thank you all for your time tonight. I thank you all for the promise that I can actually win by the blessing. And it's like, wow, if I were a reflection of God's blessing, I would take it because it is protection. I am safe. So I want to say that with knowing where we're at in this time, I'm happy to be a representative and a candidate as a black man, I will say it, and someone who is trying to make a difference for the better. So I thank you for your time. This is, want to get into, you know, how you can help. You can volunteer. I'm always over volunteers. Volunteers come to, hey, you want to take a stack of this in your street and give it to your neighbors and their doors? Please help me. I need help door, door canvassing. I wake up at like 6:30 to go out do this. So, you know, if you ever see me, you're next door, that's probably me. I'm not stealing anything. I'm just putting this in your door. But when it comes to what we can help, we need volunteers to help get this information out when it comes to telling a friend. Tell a friend about me. Tell your family member. Tell someone you may know who is a first time voter that is looking to see what they can do in being a part of the changes here happening in Manhattan Beach, such as a general election, I'm sorry, City Council being on a general election, that's big. You can get a yard sign and a window sign. I have them. I'm getting them. We have more. We sold out. And let me tell you something, someone actually took three signs from someone's property. So that happened. I was actually a part of vandalism, people taking me down as far as my signs and my names here in Manhattan Beach. So I discovered that today to ours before our broadcast. But hey, why they hate, I will continue to be great. So when it comes to also voting, we also need to get out there to vote, 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 vote. This is such an important time, so many propositions on the ballot, so many things to understand what's happening. And it's okay to ask questions. And I'm hoping that if you're asking questions, they're getting answered by the representatives that you need to be hearing from. So that's going to, oh, don't, you could donate to my campaign. Sorry, I almost missed that one. You could donate to my campaign. You can go to www.chatsplimmings.com and click the donate tab and help get this campaign going. We're still look, need money for direct door mailing. We still need money for the next issue of the Easy Reader. We still have to get a lot more done around getting more marketing out for this campaign. So I thank you all who have donated and I think you, even if you can spread that message out of this campaign. So I'm going to actually now, you know, everyone's allowed to unmute themselves to make it appropriate so everyone can have a time to have any questions or comments. You can raise your hand and I can unmute you personally myself. So if anyone has any questions, they can. Cynthia, hi, one second Cynthia. I asked you can unmute yourself?
Thank you for your
One second Cynthia, I can't quite hear you. One second.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
One second. It's probably my side. Can you talk Cynthia? Can you hear, can you hear you?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
One second, sorry, sorry. Alrighty.
Oh, some people can hear me.
No, 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 I can't hear you. I can't hear you yet. Alrighty Cynthia?
Yeah. Yes.
Can I hear you?
Can you hear me? I can hear you.
Okay.
Very good. Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Sorry about that.
No problem. I wanted to circle back to the affordable housing issue. And I was hoping you could educate me a little bit about how that's defined. You know, what, what does affordable housing mean? And so we need 38 units.
Yes.
Is it defined by an actual
The last two, two words, I'm sorry.
Is it defined by a certain dollar amount per month, for example, or?
Oh, yeah, they had, you know, I don't have the housing element, but from what my knowledge was, they were talking about starting a one bedroom at $1,200.
Okay, so you're talking about apartments?
Yeah, for certain apartments. And this is where it comes to that being from SB2 funds you can get that from, but also the planning around that it hasn't been done. So even when it comes to the data, they have been from the assessed value of where properties were at that time of 2013. So, you know, it's going to rise where we're talking about now, 2021 to 2028 as far as being on the spectrum. So, you know, they, you know, we need to really go forward in asking our city council to address that issue. And especially since we are, you know, we're, we're, sorry, putting about over a hundred thousand dollars to renovate our bathrooms. We can most definitely put some money into affordable housing and making that option happen. We have a great library where that has some local families be able to enjoy that library as well. So, yeah, I'm hoping, and that's the thing, if you want to also send me an email, I can forward you the housing element and be able to give you that full print because it is something that they have signed into law.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else with a question I may answer? Any comments? I'm gonna look at the chat to see if there's any questions that were asked, so I can.
I have one Chad.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, how are you doing?
How are you?
I'm well.
Good, good. So, um, yeah, I have a great presentation. You know, I think there's, you know, all sorts of arguments that can be made in regards to some kind of reparations. You know, my family had some land and thriving businesses here as well years ago. And, and we fell victim to a series of fake workman's comp claims. Crooked doctrine attorneys started feasting off of us. And we had a slew of fake claims that were proven fake. They eventually went to jail, but not until after our businesses, we lost everything. So, you know, and believe me, I'd love to get some reparations for that. But, um, but anyway, so I'm not to convolute things here. I'm just saying, I get it. I understand. You know, I think, and so there's definitely some arguments to be made there and I can, I can relate to it. I mean, we were, we, we fell victims to that, you know, the, the, these, this slew of, you know, fake workman comp claims that were proven fake, proven false. But anyway, um, so, you know, there's, it is sort of a slippery slope when you start going down that path in terms of where that stops. But that maybe is another argument for another time. But really my main concern is just that, I just am curious as to what your position is. Because I've heard this kind of argument or this, this position, which again, to be very, very clear, I, I'm kind of, you know, I'm open to that discussion. I think there's definitely some, there's an issue there that still needs to be discussed and possibly addressed.
Yeah.
But I'm just curious if, because I have heard some conflation, that being conflated into things like the idea of defunding our police and that kind of thing. And I just wanted to find out where you stand on that. I know we just had a shooting recently and things have been, I've had friends that have been staying at the Marriott Residence Inn. And, you know, it seems, and they've had quite a few series of issues up in there. And so, you know, I'm just curious, because there seems to be some kind of conflation in terms of some of these felt past injustices and, and how those relate to, you know, possibly trying to defund the police and that kind of thing. I just want to know where, what your position is in regard to that and in regard to continuing enforcement, given that there have been, particularly up at the Residence Inn, there's been quite a bit of increased activity. There was recently a shooting. And, uh, and so I just wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Alrighty, so there were three, three questions you asked. And I want to go back into the one comment about first reparations, several reparations and a whole capacity. I'm so sorry that your family went through what they did when it comes, when it came to
I appreciate
fine data. I mean, that is something that generational wealth was taken from your family and from you. And I'm
Yeah, you know, I appreciate that, but I just, I don't
Yeah, but I want to go as far as
I just, I just, no, I just got to work hard in the present. So I don't really concern myself with, with that kind of stuff. But anyway, go ahead.
But there's people as far as in the state, as far as an assembly that are caring about giving reparations. So right now we have AB 3121, which is on the bill for giving reparations around slavery. Now I've called the people who have authored that bill regarding giving, understanding all people of culture as far as understanding what they've been through around poverty being taken away, slavery, you know, situation around the Bruce's family, Yamatsu family to signify that in their task force. So when it comes to situations like that, yes, when it comes to the topic of reparations on Manhattan Beach side, yes, there's still much more conversation. And I'm hoping that when that assembly bill is signed by the governor, which is on his table. I was aware of last week, it is on his table to sign, could go forward in that conversation. So when it comes to that money coming from defund the police, that's When it comes to that money coming from defund the police, that's not a source where that would come from. Let's talk about where we had a city council meeting. Not last Friday, but, um, two weeks before that, when it came to the conversation that no reparations can come from a general fund. So we could take money from the police fund and the general fund. We, we, so that's something that's not gonna happen as far as.
So is that, is that where the, uh, is that where the defi- defund the police thing kind of came in?
That, and that's where people are talking about. Now I had, I saw a post. Where someone was talking about defund the police and they're saying, the reason why we're saying defund the police. Is in situations where we can't get affordable housing. Cause the people who are, I guess, are around defund the police are talking about. Taking money from resources that are going into. Places that they don't feel that the need is there to go into other public services. That's my understanding of it. And my understanding to that here in Manhattan Beach has nothing to do with defund the police for reparations for Bruce's beach. For what you're asking for that. So. But yeah, I want to put, sorry, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Yeah, I've, I've heard that, uh. That differentiation or that, that I guess maybe you would call it a clarification, if, if you will. Oh, we're not talking about defunding the police. We're talking about allocating funds differently, which, you know, again, uh, maybe a separate discussion.
And that's the thing, yes. And that conversation doesn't have to be around defunding the police. It just be as a city council, hey, put money towards this program, put money towards that program. Where, where they find the money, where they find the money is where they find the money. So it's, you know, to the point, you know, we're also talking about, you know, the situation of residence and I don't know if you were, um. Read the city attorney's, um. Letter regarding that, that whole new protocol as far as how the resident and will have more security. They will be having a surcharge in their. Um, rates and they now have to have a different protocol about how they conduct businesses now. So.
Then maybe that, maybe that would be helpful in terms of a specific plan in terms of what. Because as it stands right now, nobody's having to pay anything extra for the police service that we had up to this point. So if there's some, some, um, plan that you have to defun, uh, to defer that to some other programs. Then by all means, you know, let's see that, put it on the table. Where is that money going? And then, and then, and then how much would need to go back into the police department to make sure we're not. Losing actual police, uh, uh, you know, protection here in the area.
And, you know, that kind of goes back into measure A. Measure A was signed in twenty seventeen and that was a, like I said, the bill that was supposed to go. That was the hotel tax bill. Measure A is the hotel tax bill. If you stay in Manhattan Beach, you get a hotel tax. That hotel tax goes towards us having. Police, um, emergency services, um. Streets being repaired and graffiti being repaired and also, uh, accountability on the financial aspect. You know, some issues I have around that is that that was only signed by, you know, voted in by seventy percent of the vote for yes. So there is a majority that weren't okay with the fact that, hey, why is, why do I have to put more police on the street? To get my street, to get my, to get my street fixed. We paid.
Wait, I'm sorry. Let me just clarify. You said seventy, I'm sorry, you said seventy percent. It was passed by seventy percent?
Seventy percent in Manhattan Beach.
Oh, okay. Cause that's, that's pretty good. That's a, that's a pretty healthy majority.
Yes, but there is the majority as well who you have to listen to. They're saying, why should, would I have to?
You mean the minority, the?
The minority, sorry, the minority. Thank you. The minority and somewhat of the majority too, because I knew people who have voted on that measure A. In our, for the police, but they were like, why would I have to basically put more money in my tax? Or sorry, not money from taxes from, um, them, or my family has to stay here because there is no short term rent. I mean, short, short term rentals. So they're like, why should I have to pay money into the hotel here so my family? For, for the streets should be paid already. So things like that, we're talking about the transparency where money is going. I mean. There's so many things we could talk about and that would have been good for measure A at the time to have went to youth programs that are needed right now when it comes to drug programs. And the, um. Mental health programs are needed at this time. So we are at a time where, yes, we need to be more. Creative and asking for where we want our money to be allocated and it's something that should be done diligently. So.
Hey, you may, you may have my support. I'd just like to see that plan. That's all like specific.
And I'll work on that and I thank you for that question. And that was a great prepart to even show you some of the research I've been doing in that time. So.
Yeah, because I mean, with everything else going on, I would just hate to see, you know, uh. And I know there are some, that's, it's kind of a big topic right now and, and. I understand even some people who have put signs out in support of the police have had, you know. Letters dropped in their mailbox saying that they look at that as some sort of an, uh, uh, some kind of an affront or something, which. Again, I, I'm not going to get into any of those issues. I'm just saying that, that me, it's just an issue, I think, for a lot of Manhattan Beach is. Not wanting to see police, uh, you know, uh, uh, coming out and saying, hey, we don't support the police and we wanted to fund the police. And I get it if, if, if that's not really the, the actual plan, if the plan is to actually just allocate elsewhere, but not, but. Or, or maybe divert some funds elsewhere, but maintain the amount that we do have for the police, then, then great. You know, let's, I, I, like I say, by all means, let's see it, um, and we can go from there. But that's, that was it really. My only clarification. I wanted to find out. Um, where you stand and, and in specifics in terms of that type of plan. But I, I gotta go. Great. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you. May I get your name, please? I'm so sorry.
Yeah, my name's Chris.
Chris, thank you, Chris.
Yeah. And, um, yeah.
Please send me an email. I'd like to communicate further with you around that initiative and give you more of a plan and. I'm gonna work on that specifically for you and everyone who should most definitely see it.
What's your email address?
It's chazflemings, C-H-A-Z-F-L-E-M-M-I-N-G-S for everyone at gmail dot com. Please reach out to me.
All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your questions and your time. Were there any more questions before I was to get into the ones in the comments? Here we go. Question from Kay Gilbert. License plate cameras, yes or no? If yes, how would you protect privacy? Should they be monitored as now? By an outside contractor? How long should they be kept if they don't lead to an investigation? How can it be protected from hacking on unauthorized access? Ms. Gilbert, that's a great question. License plate cameras and body cams are a situation where we are trying to understand. How is that being utilized? And. Currently, when it comes to, let's talk about body cams, that access to get that data is hard. When it comes to a city council member can't get it, has to go through a whole court proceeding process. So. Situations around that and how they're using that data is a great question. And I've been trying to get a great answer on that. But for license plate readers, we have politicians here that want to increase more. I think we need to be spending our money on better items. Let's talk about the situation where there was forty six, I believe, um, car break-ins. So before he says car break-ins, the police department reported twenty one of those. Incidents being someone left their keys in the car. So either the keys were in the seat or the keys were in the ignition. They were in the car for people to be able to. You know, obtain access. And no one should be just going around opening people's door doors and stuff like that and stealing cars, but. It comes to the situation where those numbers that are increasing, where we can, as in the community, can take the effort to, hey. Maybe take our keys out of our car and lock our cars. To bring that number down where crime rate is going up higher, that we can actually. Not have the need for those types of technology to come into Manhattan Beach. As if we already have, then they're succeeding, why would we need more? So. I'm for no more of the license plate readers than the ones we do have. I mean. When it comes to our new information technology director. That's a great question. I would, I would love to ask about how do we protect that hacking and unauthorized access? Because I was at a hospital at my last capacity that got hacked. That got infiltrated by a virus that took them out for four months. I mean, talk about being at a hospital, you're ordering prescriptions, you're ordering medications, sorry, medications, food. Um, giving just doctor orders on the computer. You can't do that anymore. It was all paper fax machines. It was just. A situation that took away from. The normality of the ease of technology. And that's where we need to be aware of how technology can be a threat to people. Because there is a situation where there is a group out there that is stating that there possibly is a situation that Manhattan Beach is going after people of color. And if that is led by licensed plate readers, we need to be aware of that. So accountability around that should be with. The community and we need more accountability in that. So I'm hoping I answer that question for you, Ms. Gilbert. I'm gonna. Answer the second question. It was from Cynthia. So this is already happening now in our city. I'm sorry. She may have been asking a question regarding. Something going into a conversation. Um. Michelle, it's refreshing to hear you can't participate in council speaking positively about a commitment to affordable housing. Thank you for that. Affordable housing is something I really will expand on in a plan that we can have another conversation another time. I'll figure. And also fifty days until the election, guys, fifty days. Million ballots come in October sixth. My cousin Keith said fifty days to remind. I would remind you guys fifty days to the election. So please, 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 please get out there and vote. Make sure you're registered. Manhattan Beach used to require, this is from Chris Davis, Manhattan Beach just required that bicycles be licensed. Writers had to complete a safety test and show they knew traffic laws. If anyone has any, any information, not Chris, I don't know if you're still here, but anyone has information regarding that, I would love to understand. Why that stop or that was and see if that is a need. I'm sorry, Ms. Gilbert, do you have a question?
Oh, no, no, no. I'm good.
Okay. Will you either, sorry, this is from Cindy. Will you either tell us or send us a link to your website? Cindy, I will most definitely. It's chazflemings.com, but I will spell it out for you as well. Um. Cindy says, define the police is a complicated issue. It does not mean getting rid of the police. This means reimagine the roles of the police. Exactly. Cindy, how are the police protecting and serving us? Where is the accountability and understanding that? And how can we know that is happening? So even us being in a small municipality, we are in a situation that certain reportings that happen that are needed by the Department of Justice. Won't come out until four years when it comes to how we are virtually profiling of anyone here in Manhattan Beach. That information is something that we should ask our police chief in getting together with the Department of Justice faster. In a way of training and knowing how they're doing that, because that's where they're at. They're understanding how to get the training around that technology. So where technology is being used around, Miss Gilbert is saying around. The, you know, auto license plate readers and how that can be infiltrated. How, you know, where are we at in really being in a progressive time in our technology and policing? So that's something we need to be more aware of. I had a message sent from Cindy. If I could read this. I believe that defying the police is really allocated money. For example. Should police programs handle in mental health programs, drug treatments, social workers, homeless housing? Uh, should police handle? Let me tell you about a situation about police handling mental health. Okay. This is, this happened in my last hospital. I have a lot of experience, a lot of experience, by the way. Experience from my last hospital, there was a situation where a. Homeless person was taking a, taken in by the police for a fifty one fifty evaluation. It was around three o'clock at night. There was about minimal personnel at the hospital. This is a graveyard shift. In that capacity and time, while the patient was on the stretcher, the patient reached out to grab the gun. And grabbing the gun, took the gun to shoot as far as just, just, you know, to shoot. The gun safety was off. The gun went off and grazed the officer's leg. Two questions around that. One, why was the gun safety off? And two, how did he get enough in time to take out the officer's holster? Situations like that are very. Questionable when it comes to police handling mental illness. I have a great amount of friends who are social workers. And they want to be the example, leading that cause and helping give the resource that is needed for the homeless and mentally ill. Because that's what they're there for. That's what the school for. So we need to be looking into that situation as well. So, um. You're asking as far as, uh, for example, please handle problems in housing, um. Right now, Beach City is, is helping in rehousing people and homelessness. I want to understand that question a little bit more Cindy, maybe we have a little question, you know, time after. I know we are getting into an hour and thirty. Um. Cindy just say it is legal in California, it is legal in California, people to volunteer, take, build and sign and seal ballots to the box. For any more information. And I will include that. I will include more vote by mail information Cindy on my website. Because there is a significant amount of my supporters who are still in the house during this time of COVID. What, cause they are in compromise and they need to keep themselves healthy for this election. So we appreciate them and. Was there any more questions I can answer from anyone? I just want to make sure that in the time we are at hour and thirty, that we do. Have everyone that's here honored.
I might have one if that's okay.
Hey Tyler.
Hi. Thanks for joining us and letting me know about it. But, um, so what is your experience, um, in living in Manhattan? For almost a year now, if I'm correct, and what, what in that has made you want to run for city council? They committed.
Thank you for that question. Um, you know, my experience in Manhattan Beach has been, uh. Huh, you know. I met some crazy people, but you know, we, we, being from a former. As a chef in a kitchen, always meet like, you know, some different type of, types of people. So you meet some people who. Aren't, you know, gonna like you when you first see you, but when it comes to that capacity, before I became a candidate, that was a situation. And even now, I believe that can still be a situation, but. My time in Manhattan Beach has been great. I will say there's been some situations where, like I said, people stopped me. On my scooter thinking I'm wrong when they're wrong on certain California vehicle codes and, you know. You know, I could feel a certain type of way, but I feel great. I feel strong. I'm thankful every day. I wake up, thank God every day for the blessings. Thank you for that hater. Thank you for the person that said, see you later. Thank you for the person that says hi. And thank you for the person that is for me. So I think for everything and it's all been a great, it's been all been a learning experience to lead me into. Running into now as a candidate for city council, understanding the time where there are African Americans being, you know. Taken in by the police and situations where. The, you know, Bruce's family, all this history. I mean, I remember driving next to Bruce's beach the first time I ever moved to Manhattan Beach. I never knew any of the history of Bruce's beach. But I remember I was on a Uber. I was, uh, on an Uber share, you know, when they used to have that. And, you know, we were driving, driving us all off and on twenty eighth street and. We were driving down and I'm like, oh my goodness, look at those rolling hills. Look how beautiful this place is. Look at the sunset. You could take someone here on a date. This is like, this is where I live. I need to come back here. I was so. Enticed about where I lived based on how beautiful Manhattan Beach is and the promise that it has. Now. There is some, you know, we are seeing some dark places in Manhattan Beach. But the light and the love that I got from people here in Manhattan Beach, even during this campaign has been great. I can't say that I've been ridiculed here in Manhattan Beach. People have liberated me to even want to be fight harder as a candidate for Manhattan Beach City Council. So.
Yes, I'm sorry. I don't know how to raise my hand.
Sorry, Chris. Hi.
Hi, I just wondered if you've had experiences with racial profiling since you've lived here.
Let me tell you. So in this resident eye, we are, we rectify that situation. We're gray, you know. But in a situation, I, um, a couple of days before the beach is open. Um, I was walking down my roommate and. This woman was taking pictures of people at the beach, like going on to the beach and doing their, uh, you know, breaking the law. No mask, all these things that we were questioned about, questioning about the time before opening the beach. And we're walking down and we're just coming as, you know, Manhattan Beach. And we're walking down, and we're just coming as, you know, Manhattan Beachers do. Some people watch, some people want to see what, you know, all the people going to the beach, how crazy it is of time we're living, you know, it was so crazy when the beaches were closed. So we're coming down there and enjoying our, you know, where we live. And this woman looks over, she's like, ah, look, it's coming, taking pictures. I mean, like literally, you know, just being so belligerent and dramatic. So I'm, and she's like, looking at me, scoffing at me. She's like, you know, you can go on there if you want. I was like, I know I live here. She's like, oh, you live here? I was like, yes. She's like, where do you live? I was like,
My family is a racially mixed family. And when my sister and her husband who recently learned to move to Long Beach, they raised their kids here. They went to Maricopa. My brother-in-law, who is black, was routinely had people calling the police on him blocks from his home in Manhattan Beach. So I just want to make sure that everybody realizes that it really is happening here.
Yes. And let me tell you another situation, which is so crazy how this happened. And this is something that you all need to hear. So I don't know if you guys are familiar with the ARMS group. I've met the founder of ARMS at a TIL event that they had here at Bruce's beach when I was getting signatures. I happened to be walking upon this event and I happened to meet these people who were creating this event. So, and this woman, she was, you know, her name's Kevon. She's a great woman when it comes to her passion. She was like, what are you going to do for, for housing? What are you going to do? She was schooling me on what I was going to do as a candidate. And I just signed up for my candidacy like a week ago. So she was already on reading who I was, getting her information, not knowing I was going to be there. So it's crazy how you always have to be ready for whatever in this time, not knowing where it's going to come. So a situation four weeks ago happened when I was talking about protecting cyclists and people need to understand the vehicle code. I was, and I live in East, East Manhattan on Meadow Side, so
Me too.
Hey, neighbor. We got to see each other.
Neighbor.
So I'm, you know, on my scooter and I'm stopping at the stoplight, I'm stopping at the stoplight. This gentleman, because we're at a four-way stop sign, he stopped, he's turning on Ninth Street. So he's turning on Ninth Street. He doesn't, I stopped. He's just going and just moves by. So I'm just, ooh, you know, diverting him on my scooter. And I want to scoot, I'm on a electric Segway scooter. I don't know if you can see it right there. But I'm on that scooter going down Ninth Street over to Meadows and I stop on Meadows and I stop. Cause scooter, you know, the stop time, you know, the stop threshold is very small. So you're stopping for like at least three seconds. So stopping, two, three, going. This guy is revving his car behind me. You need to stop longer at the stop sign. I was like, sir, my car, my vehicle did a full stop. No, it wasn't. My, he was like coming back to me. My son could have, you know, going back, he's going back and forth with me. And I'm like, sir, I was on the right-hand side. I thought I'm going, you know, talking about the vehicle. This guy is just yelling at me. I'm like, he's like, I'm going to call the police on you right now. If you do that again, I'm going to call the police. You need to know what your law is. Oh, like going back and forth. Excuse my modulation. But this woman I hear is walking behind me. And she's like, is there a problem here? And I turned and it's the woman, Kevon Ward from the ARMS coming to my defense from walking her child, I guess, to school is stating, excuse me, is there a problem? I'm like, oh my gosh, Kevon, this guy has stopped me. She's like, I know, I saw you guys. Let me tell you something. And she goes to defend me and I'm telling you. And she, I didn't even understand what was happening at that moment because I'm here doing my right. I'm here following the law. I'm here finding my right in the law. And someone's trying to take me down in the sense that, was it a racial experience? It's like, wow, was there a, puts a bias already there. And this guy's already, I mean, what do you think? It was a DoorDash driver in Manhattan, I mean, on my scooter. No. Riding around my morning ride. So it's situations like that that do happen here. And when it comes to community coming together, a person who is unsure of my candidacy because she wants to know way more about me. But when it comes to the human aspect, when someone is doing wrong, we need to speak up. So yes, there has been some wrongs done to me, but I'm not going to let that take me down. That's why I say, while they hate, I will continue to be great. So, and
There are many people in Manhattan Beach who claims it doesn't happen here. And
Yeah.
I, I know better.
Yeah. And we have to, you know, teach those experiences more. And I'm even happy to have this forum where I can speak and have someone ask my experience on both sides because it hasn't been known to the public to see where I've been here in Manhattan Beach in my time. And even when it comes, came to a situation with the mayor and I, Richard Montgomery, when it came to the cleaning initiative that he put out, he was stating that how long have you been a resident here? So it's to the point that, you know, we need to be in a way of being more inclusive of who we are.
No question. No question.
Yeah, it doesn't take anyone as far as they've been there for one day to say, hey, let's clean up the beach. So
I'm impressed with you, Chaz, I have to say. So I sent you an email a little while ago. If you need help with your website, get, get in contact with me. Cause I know you build out some of the content on the issues and things.
Thank you. I, I will most definitely.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your time tonight. And I know it's getting late and I really want to wrap this up. If anyone has any more questions, I can get to and I just want to thank you all for coming tonight. And just so you know, I'm Chaz Flemings. I'm your candidate for Manhattan Beach City Council. And I hope that on November 3rd or October 6th, you get your million ballot, you vote for Chaz and let's Chaz it up here in Manhattan Beach. And thank you all for your time and thank you all for viewers are watching on the after feed. If you have any questions, please feel free to email me. My website is www.chazflemings.com. And my name, Chaz Flemings. As you see right here. At gmail.com is a way to email me. And please feel free to call me. When I give this number out on my number here, this number, you can call me. This is not a fake text number that's going to send you blast texting. This is going to go to my personal cell phone where you can ask me any questions when you need me. So that number is 310-796-6325. Call me. I'm here for you. Thank you all. And I appreciate your time.
Great job.
Thank you all.